It's seven twenty-six. And we're gonna resume our school committee meeting. We actually started our meeting with the select board this evening. So hopefully, what folks see on their TV is not gonna be completely blurry as I'm seeing, but that may be the case. I'm told exactly what we said it to in the response, so we'll just keep our fingers crossed. Our first item is our consent agenda. From March 5th, 2018, we have our minutes. I honestly did not get a chance to read it because it wasn't there when I looked for it. So, and I did not get any chance to look at it. I don't know if anybody was able to read the minutes.
I wasn't there. Wasn't at the meeting I wasn't at.
I read it. I didn't see any issues.
Okay, so actually, Deanne was not there, so we can't do this one anyway, so we have to table it. Thank you for reading it.
Uh, wait a minute though, it was the minutes from February 12th and February 26th?
No, it's just minutes from March 5th.
Right.
Yep.
Yeah, I was not there.
Okay, so we will go to visitors' comments. Is Robin back here?
Here.
All right, we have two, two visitors who would like to comment.
Do you mind if I stand back here? My voice does carry.
Not at all. I don't know how much the camera is showing right now, but you know, if you're here, at least folks can hear you.
Get a picture of my back. First of all, as President of the Granby Education Association, I would like to tell you that this is overwhelming, that the members are here, and it's all to show support for each other. Because as our buttons say, "We give a hundred percent, we're worth more than one percent." Yes, you have offered us up zero point five point five. And as I've been told, a raise is a sign of respect. And they're not feeling the respect. And that's not just for me, that's from all of our members. We are here for the children. They give more of themselves for the children than are required. It's because they love their jobs. We do understand that you are going to tell us that the school committee is facing, and the school budget is facing an over $600,000 deficit. The town needs to step up. We want that on camera. We want the people to know that if cuts have to be made, what is gonna affect their children? And how is it going to affect people who want school of choice? Are you going to lose those people coming here? And you have staff here that are amazing. And you hear from children how wonderful they are. Your high school staff, I mean, stop and think about honor society, after-school programs, after-school help. Those are things that are not required, and they give. They give, and they give more. So as I said to you, we give a hundred percent. We deserve more than one percent over three years for the contract. And none of the contracts in Granby are settled. That goes for administrative staff, paraprofessionals, and the teaching staff. Anybody?
I think Laurie's next.
Really, I am just here to echo what Robin just said. I think, you know, everybody in the room can agree that we do give a hundred percent, more than a hundred percent. And each year, it seems like we're asked to give even more. But yeah, last year we were in mediation, this year we're in mediation. And like Robin said, we understand and that the budget is what it is with the deficit. But at the same time, zero point five point five comes out to be point three three per year. And when you really factor that out amongst the paychecks, it comes down maybe being able to buy a gallon of milk for two weeks extra. And with the cost of living, with the higher cost of insurance, it just makes it very difficult with all the work and all the preparation and the caring that our staff gives each and every day.
Thank you, guys. First of all, thank you, the two of you, because I know that it's probably not easy to stand in front of the camera and say, hopefully, you're clear on camera too, but to really share that with us. But what you said earlier is what we would agree with anyway. And I don't know that, let me tell you what I told someone about a week or two ago. That when we stand in front of the town meeting and many times, oftentimes, take the heat, it's just to be able to get the funds that we believe are necessary to sustain this school district. And sustaining this school district doesn't happen without our teachers. So we're cognizant of that. The reality is the second half of what you mentioned. It's not about us not really understanding the value our teachers are bringing to this district, the sacrifices that you're making, and you know, what you are contributing to all these children's lives. It's just that we are dependent on a budget that the town approves. And even the meeting that we just came from was about, and you were there, Robin, was about one position and how we're gonna find the funds to really fund that one position, right? And we're having these conversations year after year. The fact of the matter is what you said in the second half of your statement, that if we don't have the funds, we're just trying to really find the best optimum, if there is such a thing, in this situation. And that is, we understand that everyone deserves better. But also, we're also looking at the numbers that we have in our district, how many positions we have, and how we will be affected if we lose any one of those positions. So it's a balancing act there based on what we are given. What we are given is not what we're asking for. And I know that you all know that. We are, this has been at least the third, fourth year that we were going with the same theme, that we do believe in maintaining the level of service. We do believe in giving our children what they need, and that happens through you. But we're not getting, at the end of the day, what we are asking for. And that's why we're getting into these conversations. It's not us really wanting, it's about us really trying to work with what we have.
Well, that's part of the reason why we're here also, is to make sure that it gets on camera for those at home who watch these meetings and see that, how many? Thirty, thirty teachers showed up looking for support for the job that they do. And the only way we can get that support is through the town, the people who are home watching this message, the people who have children in the school. I've made the PTO aware of your joint meeting, and I hope we have this kind of a turnout, if not more, so they can hear how the finance committee is working. And I mean, truly, once, I've been there. I've heard how the finance committee would like to do this, this, and this. And so you're in an operating budget. We need these schools in Granby. The kids in this school district are Granby's future. Because if you hold the people in Granby, and I'm gonna tell you, sometimes it's embarrassing. Guess what? She was my teacher when I was here, and they're talking about me. People from Granby stay in Granby. And the future are the children. Please, citizens of Granby, need to step up, make your voices heard, attend town meeting, support the schools and the teachers, because it's for your children.
Agreed. Agreed. I think the key issue that we're dealing with is that we're not looking at this town as a whole, since you mentioned that people in Granby, stay in Granby. We make it sound as if we always have to deal with that pie, the same-sized pie. And it doesn't work that way, because things obviously get more expensive, you know, cost of living changes and all that, it's all understood. But we're talking about really sharing or distributing that same pie. We really have to look at the town and look at the opportunities to really grow the town altogether, so the schools can get their fair share. And then we can, we can, so that we don't have these conversations. Not because we should, we don't have to. We always love having you guys here, and I absolutely appreciate that you're here to, you know, raise your concerns. But that we do understand the value that is added through the schools, through our teachers, so we don't have to have these conversations for that reason. That it is already understood from the get-go that we don't really have to reiterate it as if it's not understood. We're working on that. We're, the joint meeting is a good place. We see that as an opportunity to really be able to sit down with other committees, the finance committee and the select board, to really talk about the same issues that you are raising here. And when we go to the town meeting, our primary goal, and it's been, you would remember, the last so many years, is to really keep, keep the services that we have, that our children need. So I will say it that way. We're all here for the children, and you've said that, right? But again, the well-being of the children, their education, is dependent on those who educate them. And that's why we really have to put that picture once again in front of the town. But we're hopeful that we're gonna, we're gonna start a better conversation this time around on April 2nd, when we have the joint meeting. No, thank you. Thank you all very much for coming. We appreciate it. And don't hesitate to come on your own either. If you have any concerns, you're free. This camera, when it works, is for all of us. Just, you know, feel free to come and raise your concerns. And this is actually an opportunity for us to be able to share or to be able to amplify what we're trying to say, because your voices are adding to it. So it's much appreciated. Thank you all for coming. Was there anybody, I know that only two of you signed up. Was there anybody else who wanted to say anything else before we continue? Okay. All right, well, thank you all. Was there anybody on our committee who wanted to say anything?
I think I would just reiterate what you were saying, that if we could somehow mobilize the entire town, that would be really helpful. Because we're not unified right now in the school committee, and the superintendent, the administration, the teachers. We can't do anything without the support of the town, because it's the town people that come to the annual meetings, and they either vote yes, or they vote no. And we can deliver the message, and I think the current school committee has been trying to deliver the same message for several years now, which is, "We're all in this together, and, you know, we can't do it ourselves." That ultimately, you know, it comes down to the town showing up at the meetings and voting. And, you know, you guys are a great representation of how, how we can all, I don't know, put ourselves together and start mobilizing the town, getting the message out. You know, social media, I don't know, and making sure that people show up and vote.
And the unfortunate thing is, we cannot say to parents, "You need to go to town meeting and vote." That's, I mean.
We can say, "Show up and vote," we just can't tell them how to vote.
How to vote.
I would love to just see everybody show up and vote, because.
Well, that's part of the reason, I mean, we're here so you know where we stand. But we're also here, and I stood in front of the camera, to tell people, "Take ownership of this. This is the schools in their town. It's their children." What is gonna happen to Granby without the education that we give their children? And I'm gonna tell you something. I don't work in the high school, but I have seen what happens in East Meadow. I've seen what happens at West Street. Phenomenal. It's phenomenal. And the care, and the bonding, and the rapport that these teachers build with parents. You don't get that in, I'm gonna say Chicopee, right next door. You don't get that. This is a community where we care about each other and the families. So I think the town needs to take ownership. And the town is all of its citizens. And if I could encourage even five extra people to show up to town meeting, that's a success. Because hopefully, those five people will vote for things that matter for the schools.
But I think it's also seeking out the information, too. I mean, sometimes I have, I mean, the townspeople need to raise their hands and say what's going on.
Clarify it.
Yeah, and get that information, and not just show up at the town meeting and be able to talk about it for five minutes and say, "Now I know everything I need to know."
Well, I would encourage them to come to the superintendent's budget meetings, where she explains what's going on.
And the joint meeting on April 2nd.
That's, I put that out there to the PTO, and let's get it on camera again. April 2nd, there is a select board, finance committee, and school committee meeting. Where is it being held?
The Council on Aging, right?
Will it be there for the entire?
I don't know exactly what the location is. I don't know where the location is. Is it Council on Aging?
Well, check the school website for future information, updates.
Right. Yep. Yeah. Since you guys are all here, I just wanna make sure that I reiterate something, especially, you know, when you started, you talked about, you know, our teachers and then the school committee. We don't see such delineation. When we come to these meetings, when we go to school activities, when we, you know, join you guys at other events, we don't see ourselves as outsiders. First of all, all of us are or have been parents of students. We had our relationship with our teachers for many, many years to begin with. And as you said, it's a community, so we all know you as members of this community. But again, I will take this opportunity to reiterate that. This is not a delineation. This is not, you know, folks sitting on this side of the table and, you know, everybody else on that side. Then we don't need to be here. We did not really volunteer for this and really, you know, work hard. I will say, all of the school committee members, but also take a lot of heat. We're not doing it because there is joy on that side of what we're doing. The joy is really to support education, to support our students, to support our teachers. So what Deanne said, I think, is the key theme, that we're all in it together, and that includes our community. It's not just all of us who are here, but this is about our town, our community altogether. That's the message that we need to share with everyone. We may differ in the way we see things, we may disagree on things, but at the end of the day, this is the center of our community. Whether we're talking about, you know, sports, arts activities, we talk about things that we are doing altogether as members of this community, we are part of this community, and we have to look at it that way. So hopefully, you always remember that. Because I know that from our respective perspectives, sometimes things can get blurry. But I can, I can promise you that from our side, the picture is that we're all on that one side of that picture, and then we're all together in it. And hopefully, we can find a permanent solution for our problems at schools. And that's what we're working for. It's not, it's not easy, and it's not gonna be easy, and you all know it. But that's what we're working for. Hopefully, we'll find that permanent solution. Okay. Thank you all again. Have a good evening. And if you wanna stay, we're gonna talk about the budget. We're gonna talk about superintendent's award. I don't know Hannah's here tonight. She is? She's not? Okay. So feel free to stay. All right, our student representative is out sick, so she won't be able to join us.
Wants to play too much?
I guess, yeah. I think everything caught up with her, so she can't, she can't. She suddenly started not feeling well yesterday, so.
If you saw that Sunday afternoon.
It's not the flu, but.
What? Are you?
Okay, let's go.
All right. So superintendent's award.
Yes. So I am very pleased to announce the Massachusetts Association of School Superintendent Award for the Granby Public Schools is Hannah Parent this year.
She is.
She's not able to be with us tonight, but there will be a celebration dinner with Hannah and her family and all of the local school districts at Pathfinder. I believe it is Thursday night.
Cool.
So I'm very pleased.
Congratulations to Hannah. Anything else that you wanted to add on that? No? Okay. Are we gonna be able to see her when there is a celebration, so we can congratulate her as well? Great. School committee vacancies, vacancy. So we have one member of our committee who resigned. And we're gonna have to fill that position through appointment. Any vacancy that occurs after a certain point in time cannot be announced as a vacancy, giving people enough time to react, take their papers. I think that's state law. So after that cutoff point, all vacancies get filled by appointment. What happens is, we make a recommendation to the select board, and then in all cases so far at least, they appoint that individual or those individuals to the vacant positions. I will find out when we are expected to do it for Marie's position, because we already notified them. But I don't know whether, because we only have so much time left until elections, whether or not it's common practice to fill that position.
So Emery.
Yes.
Is your appointee, will sit on the board until election time?
Yes.
Or will they finish that?
It's always one-year appointment until the next election cycle, when that position can be announced for election.
Okay, they wouldn't finish off her term?
No. Unless there's only one year left, then, you know, somebody would finish that term as an appointee.
Okay.
Otherwise, it's always one-year appointment, and then we wait until the next election. And whoever wants to run, they take the papers, and their name appears on the ballot, and we vote that way. We did not have enough time this year to be able to do that.
I just wanted to clarify.
Yeah. Yeah, I just wanted to clarify that as well in front of the camera, because obviously, you know, on a good day, we have four members. I do not want anyone who's watching, to the extent that they can see tonight, to wonder why we are continuously short one member, and that's the reason. And again, I will, I will find out how quickly we can fill that position through appointment.
That would, so if somebody got elected next year, that would only be for one year. The rest of her term, or that term, right?
So I think Marie only had one year left anyway. So that would be, the remaining of her term would be by appointment. And then that position will become vacant altogether, and it's gonna be advertised as a vacant position, so anybody can take papers to fill the three-year term. So let's say, somebody who is, who's been on the board for, on the committee for one year, they can no longer serve. The position becomes vacant, and the appointment is for one year. And then for the last year, there's an election. So the appointment is always for one year. Okay. All good? Okay, go into old business on strategic plan and review.
So we have a meeting scheduled for the 27th. Kind of hopeful it might be our final meeting to wrap up the strategic plan and get that in front of school committee.
That's a Wednesday? Because remember, we have our weekly snowstorm cycle, so we should not.
It's Tuesday.
Okay, good. And we are still planning on bringing the plan to the committee, full committee, before the end of the school year, right?
Yes.
In fact, it would be, it would be great if we could share it with the town and show why our budget is a certain way, so it's aligning with certain aspects of the strategic plan, too. Good. Any questions on plan? Okay. FY '18 budget.
Yes. So I put in your, well, earlier in your packet last week, in fact, I put together the expenditure report. So through March 15th, we've expended 67% of the budget. Other than the exceptions we've talked about, the budget is tracking to plan. But one of the things I wanted to share with you, that I just put in your folder that we've worked on, is a projection or a document called FY '18 Year End Projection, which is kind of what we've just talked to the select board about. So basically, what I did was take a look at the budget where it stands as of the 15th, look at the salaries that we have remaining to pay. So basically, what would our encumbered salaries be? Subtract that amount out, and then what is our remaining balance? So our remaining balance is, once you add in the STM awards from the vote, we have about $358,000 left to fund the schools through the remainder of the school year. And that's for things that aren't already either encumbered or known, like salaries, you know, contracts that we're already obligated to pay, tuition contracts for special education children. So it's basically like we were saying in the other meeting, but I wanna say it in this one, too. You know, those are for things that come up, you know, general budget type of items like expenses, like repairs, supplies, things that are needed but aren't necessarily anticipated. So at this point last year, we were right around the $300,000 point as well. And as you know, we made it through the school year with getting through without having a deficit. So we archived.
But we did not have a $300-something thousand surplus, right?
Right.
So I think that's what we need to clarify. You know, when we talk about numbers, it's good, you know, even it's difficult for us to understand. I really would not want anyone to think that there is $300,000, $400,000 somewhere sitting. It's just that that key word, unencumbered, is important. It means we did not yet take the money and apply it to its destination.
This is money that we potentially have to pay for expenses that are coming up. Not every expense can be anticipated, just like in your, in your own life, you know. You know you're gonna make your mortgage payment, you can plan for that. You know you're gonna make your car payment, but how much you're gonna spend for groceries, how much you're gonna spend for electricity, you know, all those, those unanticipated costs, that's what this money is intended to cover. And that's the money that the school has to, across the year, to cover those type of expenses.
Any questions on FY '18? Okay. So FY '19? Did you want the lights off? Or you're good?
So I would again like to say thank you to the leadership team for their input into the development of the budget. That includes Carol Hepworth from People's Services, Bill Latoy, Stephen Sullivan, Nancy Jenks, David Lukashevitz, and Mark Jepulus. Ally. Ally. So we spent many an hour going through the budget.
So, we spent many an hour going through the budget, and really combing through the budget to make any adjustments that we possibly could, knowing that we have a structural gap in the budget that occurs every year, because what is voted on town meeting floor is not applied to the base of the budget. So, in other words, every year, there's a vote on town meeting floor for additional expenditures into the school department budget, but it's a one-year expenditure only. And so, every year, we get to the next budget cycle and have to make up that same number, and even more. So, that's a very difficult position for us to be in, and one that doesn't recognize really the needs of the school district, the staff, the resources, or of the student learning needs. But with all that being said, I did want to go over some of the accomplishments from FY18, and forgive me, this is a repeat, but Deanne, you weren't here last time, so I wanted to go through it.
I watched it.
Oh, did you? Oh, so maybe I don't have to go through all of it, but we feel that accomplishments are effective class sizes at K2 and 3 through 6. We've kept our effective elementary interventions for students below grade level in math and reading. We have developed our supportive autism program in K3. We've restructured student support services at Granby Junior Senior High School. We continue to offer diverse AP courses at Granby Junior Senior High School. We are sustaining and growing the social emotional learning program at Granby Junior Senior High School. And we maintain the school department and school committees' focus on social emotional learning through our student support teams, our guidance and social workers, and the continued implementation of peace builders as our social emotional learning curriculum. And we have maintained co-curricular activities at all levels. So, with that being said, I think one of the celebrations really is enrollment. And although you can notice the FAR column, the total school attending children, these are the number of children who are available to attend the Granby Public Schools, has declined significantly since 2009. In 2009, 88% of children that were residents in Granby attended Granby. And you can see that throughout the years, there's been a decline, starting in really 2014, in a significant decline to 15, and then 16, and then the low of 67% in 2017. And this year, we are very pleased to announce that 74% of children that reside in Granby come to Granby Public Schools. That's important, because if we were able to get to 88% of Granby resident students coming to Granby Public Schools, the result would be an increase of $1.1 million in Chapter 70 per pupil revenue. I think that's important for the town to understand, is one of the real driving factors in our school funding, because not only is it the number of students we have, but it's how the town is creating its formula to fund the schools, is by this enrollment. And so, I would really ask the question, if we can invest in the schools and get back to 88% of Granby resident children coming to Granby, what kind of school district would we have? We'd have a substantially different one than what we work in right now.
So, we had more kids last year stay from 67 to 74%, right?
Correct. Yep.
And that came out of people that were choicing out or now deciding to stay?
Yep.
Is that the way of reading us?
Chosing out charter, private. I think we had very few, if any, students choose private school to McDuffie this year, which, as we've discussed.
New students.
Any new students, right? That's been a real.
That looked relatively flat, but I thought the biggest number was out of district public schools went from 16 to 11%, right?
Right. Yep, charter and choice. Charter is 1.5, yep, and then, choice, 11%.
That's a stat that needs to be communicated on April 2nd.
Do we, do we know why? I'm just curious if we know why they chose to stay instead of we? Because that would also be good to have that statistic, plus the reasoning behind it, right?
Yep.
Because it might support the first thing.
Well, one of the things that we've been talking about as a school committee is the survey of the community and families, and that is one of the questions that will be asked in terms of their satisfaction with the school district, satisfaction with the programming, decision-making around staying in Granby Public Schools versus using school choice or charter as an option. So, our budget assumptions for FY19, number one is to maintain a level service budget. And basically, that means if we open the doors today, the level service budget would have the same resources on September 1st, when we open the doors, as it does right now. Our other budget assumptions were to maintain a strong instructional program, maintain appropriate class sizes, maintain the intervention for struggling students, maintain all co-curricular opportunities for students, support continuum of services programming for social emotional learning and autism. Bless you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. One of the things that has been critical, and something that resource-wise has been taken off the table time and time again, is the improvement of technology capacity at Granby Junior Senior High School. With East Meadow and West Street coming together in the new building, the technology infrastructure has been taken care of with the new building. But what is going to happen, and we need to make the community aware, is we will now have students who are learning in a one-to-one computer device environment, coming up to the Granby Junior Senior High School, where the wireless infrastructure, the network infrastructure does not support that kind of usage, and we do not have the devices to support that usage. So, I think over the next two to three years, making the infrastructure investment, and really, part of that is a capital investment, in the Granby Junior Senior High School will be important. So, why do we need those? We need to improve our digital learning experiences. As you've heard me say over and over again, we have students that are going on to college and taking online coursework, or having their courses delivered in a digital context, and have no real experience with that coming out of Granby Junior Senior High School. We do need to prepare our students for the next generation computer MCAS testing. All students will be taking that on the computer, I think, this year, actually. And we also need to start preparing for STEM coursework, and developing our infrastructure and devices for that. We need to provide central office support for technology integration, so when staff have questions about helping students use the digital learning platforms, we need hands-on deck to help that happen. And we also need central office support for the data management that is becoming a bigger piece of our work at central office, and really, a bigger piece of how we maintain and acquire appropriate funding and resources at the state and federal level. And then, lastly, the budget assumption is to support curriculum development and implementation. So, as we stated, we had new requests. You will see that there are checked items. There is a Grade 3 teacher request, two paraprofessionals. You will see that the data manager and the shared curriculum director positions are not checked. Those were taken out of the FY19 request. That does not mean that they are not needed, it just means that, once again, based on the structural deficit of the budget that we encounter, we look toward any way to balance, or get as close to balancing as we can. So, we took those requests out. A special ed tuition, we know of, and we do budget that at $70,000. We had an increase to contracted services, and then, we do have an extended year learning. That is just a line item that didn't exist in the budget, but we know about, so we've created that line item for FY19. And I think it's important that the town and everyone here understand that the unanticipated expenses that were voted on town meeting floor are one-time expenditures, so they have to be assumed by the FY19 budget. So, that includes the $97,000 tuition, the transition program tuitions, and the Grade 2 teacher. So, here you have the FY18 to FY19 general fund by location, and you can see the changes in the amounts, and the percentage change. There are a few adjustments in the budget that make the percentages look a little skewed, that we would be happy to talk about, if you wanted to go through each and every one of them, but we can come back to that. So, that's the first half, and then, the second half. Okay. So, the teaching, teacher staffing trends, I think it's important to understand, there's a misunderstanding, misperception perhaps, that the Granby Public Schools has not been reducing staffing relative to reductions in enrollment. And I would like to clarify that. In 2009, 2010, there were 82.1 teachers, and that is just classroom teachers, I want to make that clear. And as you can see, as the population or enrollment declined, school department made adjustments to that, to the point where, last year, we were at 57.8 staff members, and the staffing levels for this year are not out yet, so I wanted to make sure that we compare apples and apples. So, as soon as we have the end-of-year report, we will have the teacher staffing trends from the DART data at DESI. And again, I wanted to reiterate how the schools are receiving funding from Granby. It is the state-required minimum net school spending, which is Chapter 78 from the state and the local contribution. Want to be very clear that minimum net school spending was never intended to be the bottom base of your budget. It was never meant that minimum net school spending was an appropriate amount to fund the schools. For whatever reason, in Granby, there seems to be the thought that minimum is all we have to do. And I'm not sure where that came from. So, I think that that's something that we need to have an open and honest conversation about. We also receive funding from grants and revolving accounts, and a local override that has not been adjusted for inflation, that happened in 2005, that was about $305,000, I believe it's $979.
And didn't you do a calculation with inflation, what that would be worth?
Somewhere around 4, 412, I think. Yes, I will get that to you. Okay. So, this is important, the net school spending formula that the town is using. Our request, which is the 8,986,968, plus the in-kind is the total, and then, the town takes out transportation, and then, the required net school spending, so the amount that we are over net school spending is, the request is 10.5%. The reason that's important is because, the next slide will show, we are, that request is well-aligned to our surrounding comparison districts. And so, if over time, the expenditures that had been voted on town meeting floor had been put in the base of the budget, we would have grown to something around a 10.5% over minimum net school spending. But because they never are, we are held to a minimum net school spending plus about 3%. And so, you know, you're looking at, you know, these districts that minimally are spending 10.4, 10.9, and range all the way to 30% over net school spending. I get that it's difficult to compare, but certainly, 3% over minimum net school spending, as you know, Mark spoke to today, Mark Bale spoke to today, is insufficient. I don't think there's any other way to say it, but 3% over minimum net school spending is not enough to fund the district.
And I think that, like last year, we were trying to get that message out.
Right.
But I think we need to do so again, because I was talking to people over the weekend, and I thought we were spending closer to the 10%.
Right.
No.
Nope.
Is the 305 override factored in?
So, it's, the 305 would be about the 3%.
Okay. Gotcha.
But there is that misconception still, that we are closer to the 10% when we're not.
No. We get closer to the 10% when you add the extra, the additional revenue from the town meeting floor vote. So, the 395 is close to 4%. So, now, you're starting to get to 7%, maybe.
But that was a one-time.
But it's a one-time, doesn't get in the base of the budget.
We have to be very clear about that, yeah, no, that's, that's a one-time thing.
And so, this is a slide that you are accustomed to, unfortunately.
Do you know why the transportation number is different on this slide compared to the other one?
784, 542.
Yep, that's something to look at.
Good catch, Emery.
Yep, and just for that, there are, these are estimates, so some, there are times when some of these numbers do change, so for example, the Chapter 70 is based on the governor's budget. We still have House Ways and Means to go through, so it's not a final number. And transportation is also one of those that changes, so it.
I can tell you the 814 numbers on that's correct.
813?
813, yeah.
That is correct.
$28,000 lighter, but it might have been done at a different time.
So, the current gap between a level service budget, the ability to grow with some enrollment, and have the requests to compensate for this year's unanticipated expenses, plus growth that we're seeing in some of the elementary grade levels, the request, the difference is $652,303. I did want to bring attention to some reductions that we're seeing. Our grants offset, we're gonna lose potentially Title II A, which is our professional development grant. And it is also a grant that funds a class reduction, class size reduction, so a portion of a teacher, we have to make that up in the general budget. And then, we're anticipating the revolving accounts between school choice and the reduction in Circuit Breaker to be reduced about $451,000, so we're faced with those two obstacles as well.
So, you're saying next year, we're gonna start at 65? Circuit Breaker?
Yes.
As opposed to 75 this year, which was a promise and may change? Or did it change already?
My understanding to this date is that it hasn't changed yet. There's legislation to have it change, and that there's legislation for next year to have it returned to 75, but it's gotta come with the funding, so.
So, there's 457. Is that factored in to the budget ask already?
Yes.
For next year? So, that's already part of the $600,000 beyond what you're asking for?
And these are for sure, these are certainties?
Yep.
That the grant is gone?
Right, yep.
Okay.
And as certain as it can be, that Circuit Breaker is 65% reimbursement, not 75, and the other is. And the other is a realistic school choice number.
I mean theoretically, you could have more kids coming in for school choice, that's probably the biggest unknown. But circuit breaker, we did a calculation based on who we knew we weren't gonna have next year. And there's a large tuition for somebody who's aging out, so that's one of the reasons why it's such a drop from one year to the next, because we know we're not gonna get relief for that, that tuition in FY nineteen.
But even potential school choice to the positive, I mean, we wouldn't be that far off, we wouldn't see twenty-five kids, thirty kids.
Right.
Right, that's my thousand per student.
Right, yeah.
What portion of that is related to that um to that one instance and what portion of it is reduction of ten percent for circuit breaker?
Um well, this year, this year we have it factored in at the sixty-five percent, so the change from this year to next year is the total reduction in circuit breaker relief.
So this year, we already planned at sixty-five?
Yeah.
Okay, so why would we, if that's the case, why would we say that if circuit breaker went down to sixty-five, we would have a sixty-five thousand dollar gap?
Well, we did an adjustment to the budget when it came in at sixty-five, but it's been at sixty-five through the entire year.
So that means the reduction from seventy-five to sixty-five does not really have any material impact on our budget, 'cause we planned at sixty-five?
Um I I'd have to go back and see at what point it went from seventy-five to sixty-five, but for a good portion of the year, we adjusted the budget for the sixty-five percent reimbursement, because that's what it was coming in at.
But we started the year at seventy-five?
I'd have to look and see, I'd have to look and go back and see whether we did a circuit breaker adjustment.
I think that's where it becomes important for us to have the actuals next to each one of those line items.
Yeah.
'Cause I mean, I can't keep all these things in my in my head, just we have to see where things change and where we planned for a certain number and then it just it went to some other number.
Right, and part of, yeah. Right.
It may be higher, it may be lower, but we have no idea what it is.
And part of circuit breaker again is the um aging out of one of the students um who was a large tuition that we will no longer get reimbursement for. So a large part of the revolving account, circuit breaker reduction, isn't the seventy-five to sixty-five, it's the loss of tuition of of a very high priced tuition, um and so we won't have that uh to offset.
Right, at the same time, we're not gonna have the tuition itself either, the portion that that is going out out of our budget.
We won't. Exactly, right, exactly. Right, mhm.
Okay.
And so again, I've been saying it, and I feel like a broken record, there are structural budget deficit influences um that at town meeting floor, we are very appreciative of the town's support to alleviate the budget gaps. But the budget gaps continue to accrue and occur, because that vote never gets put into the base of the budget. And so every year, we begin the budget discussion with less than level service resources. Um in addition, the uh appropriations for unanticipated expenses are a one-time expense expenditure or uh input into the school department budget, those need to be absorbed in the following year's budget.
You know, the idea of level service, it's not really level service when you're starting off from c- from cutting the previous year.
Right.
So, I don't know, I t- I don't like the term level service, because it's it's not a true level service.
Mm-hmm. Right.
It's a level service for that year.
Right, right. Well, we had talked last year about a needs-based, um you start talking about a needs-based budget, your your gap starts to go up into the eight hundred. Because you s- then you start talking about um the additional appropriation for the data manager, the infrastructure hardware. You start talking about um uh additional supports for social emotional learning. Um so a needs-based budget and a level service budget, you know, we're we're at the, we can have that discussion, um.
Well, I know we've had this discussion before, are we start, are we, are we starting from the right spot? If we're not talking about a needs-based budget from the very beginning, um
Mm-hmm.
I don't know, it it shouldn't we always be talking from a needs-based perspective, in other words? As opposed to a level service budget?
Well, it would make sense to to ask for what you need upfront and then back off to what you really have to have to keep things supposedly the same, right?
Exactly. Because your 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 picture is skewed from the beginning if you're talking about a level service. Because your your deficit from year to year just keeps growing. Not your monetary deficit, but the fact that you've had to cut teachers and and services and programs and.
I thought the uh service, the concept of service in this case aligned with need, so we need these services and that's what we're trying to keep. And potentially the the decline in number is that if you have so many students, then you know, I guess the linear uh approach to it is you may need less money type of thing.
But if you're taking, for instance, the data mana- the the data manager and the shared curriculum director out of it, that's the needs-based, having having, well, and that uh that really isn't a true needs-based budget.
Right.
But it's closer to a needs-based, but right off the top, we're taking those two positions off.
Yes, and that's 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 the uh faulty conversation that we've been having. That if you have, I don't know, if you have five hundred students, you need a hundred teachers. If you have four hundred students, you need, I don't know, eighty teachers, because it's like everyth- it's it's simple distribution of numbers across all teachers and that's not the way uh the the school functions.
Right. Right.
So that I I I agree with that.
So my question is, do we need to be thinking differently?
Yeah.
And looking from a needs-based perspective as opposed to this idea of a level? Because using the term level service, I think is sending a distorted message that this is what we need in order to meet all the services of the district, when in fact, that's not true.
So maybe we need to clarify what those mean. 'Cause I I I'm operating under an assumption of service level, level service, which may not be accurate. So you remember the last um last meeting where you presented?
Mm-hmm.
We looked at the towns that had uh that that spent, how much they spent over their uh required minimum?
Mm-hmm.
And then we thought, I think you mentioned that those that are around ten percent or so, uh probably they are not doing level service, the higher ones are doing level service, so.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
Yeah, so maybe that is where I'm getting confused.
Right.
Uh and it would be good to know what we exactly mean by that, maybe we're using the same terminology, but mean two different things.
Well, what would it, what would it be the difference, I mean, I know you probably can't answer that right off, but if you sort of look at it from 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 the needs base and came out with that separate gap figure, like you said, it's gonna be eight, eight to nine hundred thousand, somewhere in that range, but plus the three oh five, seven ninety-seven, that would probably come out to what, twelve, thirteen percent over net school spending?
Mm-hmm.
Is that is that kinda what you're talking about?
Well, I guess I'm I'm just wondering, why are we taking out the data manager and the shared curriculum director? I mean, I'm just throwing this out there, if if that, if that, if those are positions that we need, I mean, and we know we need them. I mean, we, every year, we have a data manager in there and every year, we pull one out, so we're beyond the need.
Yeah, and I think that is the discrepancy between what you call need and then service. Service is basically, we're gonna keep the uh services uh same year over year. But if you have new positions to add because of the direction, uh additional needs, this is what we've been holding off for a while now. We have to introduce the data manager or curriculum uh director. That becomes that need part on top of the service. So you you have, you keep the services the same, but doesn't mean that your your, some of your needs will not change and will require additional expenditure.
And you'll never have the opportunity to meet the need if we keep, if we keep cutting the position.
Right, or never even entertain the position in this case, yeah.
Do you see what I'm saying? We can't even entertain it, because we keep removing it.
Yeah, no, I see what you're saying, yeah, yep.
I mean, it's gonna be met with a lot of resistance, but no matter what we do, it's gonna be met with resistance anyway, so.
Yeah, I mean, it's a matter of really explaining it, and I think that's that goes back to that narrative conversation that we keep on having. Just to the extent that we're able to explain and we know, we know what's going on, that's one thing. If we can't explain really what these things mean, and that's why I'm, I would rather clarify what these things mean before we get into April second or other conversations.
Mm-hmm. Yep.
So we're all on the same page on that.
Well, and if we're, if we're also thinking ahead with the new school opening up in September, you know, you're gonna have sixth graders who will be coming to this school the following year.
Mm-hmm.
Who are are going to come here completely ill-equipped to um to handle all of these wonderful things that they've learned at this brand-new school with all this really great technology.
Mm-hmm.
So we're a, we're a year away from
Mm-hmm.
from this really um being a a problem in real time. You know, 'cause it's always been theoretical, it, we need a data manager, we know that, you know, we're we're operating on in crisis mode all the time. But now it becomes reality to the students in real time.
That that's a, that's a good point, but I would like to, again, understand, I would like some education on uh what what we mean by providing technology. Is it always provided through that one-on-one, you know, one device to uh per student? Or is there, is there a way to really provide the um the technology-based uh resources without really having that one-on-one? So I understand that, yes, that one-on-one uh connection will be broken uh almost immediately next year when uh the sixth graders come up here. But are we able to really look at it a little differently to see if we can provide still technology-based um uh support, educational support? But not necessarily because it's one-on-one, I don't know.
Right, I think what the teachers are learning about at the three through six with the Chromebooks that have been um put into the classrooms is that the learning and the communication, the writing, the journaling is is in real time. So they're using the Chromebooks to journal and then teachers are giving feedback in real time. So kids are gonna be learning in that kind of environment and then come up here and go to a lab to fill out their journal or, you know, and I think that's, that's the tension.
Mm-hmm.
You know, some of our courses for computers like Computer AP absolutely require a different lab, a more sophisticated lab, as David will tell you. Um much more uh network capacity, much more computer um capacity. But our, how we are going to be communicating as teacher and learner, the sixth graders are going to be very accustomed to an asynchronous, just
Mm-hmm. Yes.
Or synchronous, asynchronous, they just get on and they're, you know, they're checking their homework, they're doing their, you know.
So the Chromebooks, we got them as part of the project, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Are we anticipating that we're gonna be getting uh Chromebooks a- as donations?
Highly unlikely at this point, there's there's no, I, you know, we've been, we've been using donations for probably fifteen years now. We've been exclusively um exclusively using them for probably close to ten years where, you know, that's all we've been using. And uh it's been traditional PC-based uh devices, uh desktop computers, laptops, computers that are Windows-based.
Yep.
Um we never had any, you know, uh iPads uh in any masses donated or Apple computers um or 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 Chromebooks.
Yeah.
So uh if if the history is indicative of what we are to expect, I would say no.
The reason why I'm asking, for the immediate future, the problem is, you know, sixth graders come up here and they don't have it. But because technology becomes obsolete, you know, so quickly, if we don't find some way to replenish what we already have, we're gonna have the same problem within the same uh building anyway.
Right.
So we're talking about a solution and that's that's why I'm going with that. Is one-on-one the way we wanna uh talk about it, or do we really want to frame it as a a broader uh approach to education? And then, you know, find different ways of providing that that education?
Well, the the Chromebook is just one aspect of technology.
Right.
Uh I mean, we're also talking about the infrastructure in a brand-new school and in a renovated school.
Right.
Every aspect of technology is going to be different going from from that school environment to this school environment. So the Chromebook is just one piece of it.
Right.
I I'm I'm thinking more broadly when it comes to just um, you know, again, getting back to the conversation about needs-based versus level service. I the the broader conversation is, we know we need a data manager. We've, we've known this now for, this is the fourth year that we've had this in the budget and the fourth year that's been taken out of the budget. And I think if 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 we continue along the 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 discussion of um, you know, we're all in this together and, you know, we've had all these teachers here today, you know, supporting that, right?
Mm-hmm.
And and we we wanna have the town step up, what do we wanna step up to? Do we wanna s- s- step up to a level service that's been cut from the prior year and the prior year to that and the prior year to that, or do we wanna start with a needs base and say, this is what we need and, you know? I'm not saying, you know, what we need is a BMW seven series, you know, I I'm just saying, let's put the data manager and the shared curriculum director back in where it belongs. Because that's what Cheryl is saying we need for the budget.
I mean, if that's what we need to do, that's what we do. Either way, we're showing a deficit, e- either way, the deficit is, you know, uh north of six fifty in this case, if we're gonna add it there, right? I guess we, th- this is where I'm I'm um struggling to find the right, right story around this. We talk about a strategic plan, we need to align to that. We're talking about education, how are we gonna offer it, we need to align to that. So every single thing that we're talking about, in my mind, has to be aligned with something that we already decided is critical to the success of this district. Unless we do that, any position is a position. 'Cause we we understand the value of it, the importance of it, but we have to be able to articulate it to other folks. Why a data manager position important, why a curriculum director position, uh even though it's shared, it's important. I think that's why we did not really do a great job the last so many years. That's why we really have to say, this is what we're trying to do, this is why we need these positions, we need the these additional positions. That's how we have to explain it. When we go and say, you know, now we need a data manager position, uh you know, f- most folks don't even understand what that means or what it does and what the value is that it brings.
Well, I respectfully disagree with that, in two thousand eighteen, I think m- 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 most people understand the importance of a data manager.
Why why do we think data manager is important?
Well, considering, you know, ninety-something percent of households have computers and most people are on, and you know, this is just my own anecdotal, with the exception of me, most people are on social media and I think, you know, as a civilization, especially here in the US, we understand the importance of you know, keeping our software up to date, our hardware up to date, security now is becoming even more and more important. So, you know, I don't, I don't think it's far-fetched to say that, you know, we've taken this the data manager position out of the budget for the last four years. You know, we can certainly have David come up and make another presentation about where our deficits are and why it's critical.
See, I I I will, again, just very honestly say, that's not what I understood, understand the role of data manager to be. I mean, all that stuff that we're talking about, that's infrastructure-related, so if there are updates to the infrastructure I mean, all that stuff that we're talking about, that's infrastructure-related, so if there are updates to the infrastructure and stuff, somebody else takes care of it, and that's, you know, all these cases is David.
It's David.
But how do we really split and what the data manager does needs to be clearly explained?
Right.
I'm not saying that we should not have it, obviously there is a need, that's why we've been discussing it the last so many years. But it has to be, the purpose has to be clear. Not to us, to everybody, you know, you gave your own example, I completely agree with that.
And I, and I know it was a fumbled example because I am so illiterate when it comes to technology.
But, that's the best example though. I mean, we're making the assumption that everybody understands what a data manager is or does. We should assume that nobody understands. In fact, I will make the assumption that I'm not a hundred percent sure what that is, and we've been talking about it and I've been, you know, asking about it. What are, wha- wha- what is the description of that position that we should be aware of so we can share it with the town? And that's, that's the, that's the position we need to be in when we get into these conversations, that we have to understand exactly any one of these positions.
I think we're drilling down too far right now for the purposes of this conversation. The conversation started off with just throwing out there, do we need to be, uh, um, needs-based or level-service-based? Because i- it's just something that I've been thinking about these last several meetings that whenever I hear level service, I'm like, level service to what? You know, we're, we're not, we're really not level service.
No, that, we're not, and that's, that was the problem. We're saying that we should start with level service. At least not lose the level of service that we've been providing. When you keep on cutting and you are boxing yourself to a number, then obviously you can't provide the same services, so you either cut some of the services or, uh, you know, you find yourself strained to, uh, offer the services without the resources to support it. And I, I, so it's, it's fair, but I, um, and I'm, I'm good, I mean, we can just keep, I don't know how much the, how much difference it was making. But at the end of the day, whatever it is, we have to have the conversation to explain what, what we mean by these positions, what we mean by all these, um, uh, expense lines.
And I, I.
Emery, that's it in a nutshell, because you're gonna be dealing with the finance committee and you need to have, that's what this is and that's what this is. No gray areas, no little bits around. Just because I've seen how our finance committee operates with you, I'm not sure the needs-based is something they're even gonna wanna hear about.
And that's okay, uh, you know.
Because they are based on level funding.
Right, so, but, I mean, it's just a label, right? I mean, th- this is what we need.
Right.
To, to get where we need to go.
But you need to have a definite explanation for both, so, to compare.
Right, but to what Emery was saying, maybe, maybe just what would the job postings be, right?
Mm-hmm.
And that would get you what that, what that means and what that job would entail.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. And it's seventy-three thousand dollars total right there. Uh, you know, we can start with that conversation, but again, just, we have some homework to do.
Mm-hmm.
But you know, no matter what we go for, they're gonna chip us back, so we may as well go for here and then settle closer to what we actually need versus what we've been getting.
Do we have, um, job descriptions for the director or the, or than, we, yeah?
For both.
Okay. So what is, what are our next plans? We don't have a lot of time, we have four weeks, I think, between now and April second.
Not even, right, three?
Two weeks, there's this nineteenth.
This is nineteen.
I would love it if there was four weeks, Emery.
Three weeks, I'd say.
Alright, so.
There's four weeks between now and the public hearing.
Nineteen twenty-six, okay, so that means we have no time. When are we gonna get to a position where we know what we're talking about, uh, with respect to FY nineteen? How are we gonna do that?
So, so this was, I think, to get you the information with the line items and in the general fund by location, the changes in percent. So, I think to Robin's point, finance committee would be looking for the line item changes and then the description of the line items. So, my suggestion might be that we come together in a, in a budget workshop like we've done in the past and create that document so that we're very clear and, and have the narrative for why there were changes, um, in the FY nineteen budget and that we can articulate that clearly.
Yeah. Because i- i- in a trust-based environment, we would have all these things and then it would have been, uh, if the schools need it, would trust that you are using these resources wisely.
Right.
Uh, and you're not spending any money unnecessarily. We don't have that relationship. So that's why we need to explain all these, uh, especially additions to our budget, uh, with, with the purpose and what it does,
Mm-hmm.
how much, uh, it adds. If not, we get lost in, in, you know, in all these circular conversations, you know, hey, we need seventy-three more, seventy-three thousand more, you know, why? And then we forget that there's a huge nine million dollar, nine million d- uh, plus, uh, budget there that, that, that gets lost, you know, in, in, in detail. So we have to really provide all that information for everyone. F- forget about the, uh, finance committee or everybody else. We have to really know what we're, what we're, uh, s- um, proposing and we have to really share it with the, with the public in a way that makes sense. Uh, 'cause we keep on talking about this, you know, sharing information and education and all that stuff. Uh, we're making a very strong assumption, I, and I'm being very honest about it. I play with numbers all the time. Uh, you know, I do it for a living too, but I get lost in some of these things sometimes. I can't explain everything, right? That's why I ask questions when Mark comes in and just, how do, how do we explain this and that? So when we take that, we should be able to filter it and be able to explain what that means for, for folks who are not playing with numbers all the time.
So can we play maybe calendar tag?
Sure. I actually have a school committee meeting on twenty-six on my calendar. You see, I like these meetings, so.
Can we do the twenty-six? Um, was that, we had scheduled it and then moved it because it was, it was just out of sequence.
That's on Monday, right?
Yep.
Yeah. I think we should at least start with that, Emily.
Yeah, I, I think I could do that.
Yeah.
Okay. Budget only?
So just a budget workshop?
Yes.
Mm-hmm.
Six thirty?
Okay. Well, is that it? Okay. Any questions on FY nineteen? Okay, Chartwells.
Chartwells is unable to make it, so they said they will come next time.
Okay.
So that'll be, it's not gonna be April second.
I'll make sure that my next time and his next time are the same next time.
So that would be what, mid-April?
Yeah.
Okay. Do we have anything from them? Any update?
I don't have the P and L from them yet, no.
Okay.
He's new, so I think he's still finding his sea legs.
Yeah, well.
They did, they did talk about.
Yeah.
Trying to find ways to close some of that gap and I think they're kinda run out of time, right? Be interested to hear what they think they were gonna try to do.
And I'll look, what is, what is our schedule? Because maybe, depending on, because they don't have the results till the eighth. But if our, if our first meeting is late enough as a first meeting, we could get them here on the first meeting as opposed to the second. 'Cause kinda part of what's that tied to is that they don't close their books and have the data for us until eighth, and a lot of times the first school committee meeting occurs before then, so.
Well, the first, first one is April second joint meeting.
I think it's.
So that's, alright, so then we'll have to go with the second one, 'cause they won't, they won't have it.
Yeah.
But they've also, if they were supposed to be here monthly, they should've been here before March and they haven't been.
Mm-hmm.
So they should've, I mean, at the very least, at some meeting, they could've been able to share March data, right?
Right, that's what I was gonna say.
Yeah. Especially after, you know, just you, you throw that you're gonna have such a, uh, deficit, you know, it's what you're anticipating. You know, some follow-up, even if we don't ask a question, a follow-up would, at least in my mind, be, would be the way to go.
Mm-hmm. Right.
So.
I was surprised, 'cause last I knew, up until earlier today, I thought they were coming to this meeting, so. I was following up for the P and L and then I heard that they couldn't make it, so.
Okay.
I'll have a conversation with them.
Okay. Alright, um, superintendent's report?
Yes. Okay. Uh, we have had a wonderful couple of weeks. Uh, it's always one of my favorite times of year, well, part of my favorite time of year. There's a lot of cool student things going on. Um, we've already introduced Hannah Parent as the Granby recipient of the Massachusetts Association of School Superintendent's Award, winner for academic excellence, um. This week, uh, or this past week, we also had our induction of the National Honor Society, uh, our new inductees. It was a wonderful evening, uh, and I was enlightened by Mr. Bernash and his, uh, and his trip through history and Greek and Roman history regarding character traits and, uh, he never ceases to amaze. Um, and neither do our students, so congratulations to our students who were inducted. Um, haphazardly ever after, I was able to attend on Saturday night, I believe, um, and it was just a wonderful, uh, experience. Um, it's so, it's, it's just wonderful to see the, the span of students that participate and, um, the joy they bring to their performance and, um, even though there are, you know, some technical glitches, which I think happen in every production, um, to, to listen and watch them overcome that, um, what a great learning experience they, they have had. Um, and what a great, uh, service they provide to the community, uh, to be able to do that kind of performance. Um, you know, we are a small town and often that's, uh, a real treat for the community to be able to come and watch, uh, uh, watch our plays, so. Uh, I did have, ooh, there's a typo there, I apologize. I had the opportunity to participate in the Rural Schools Coalition Meeting with State Representative Hines this week. Uh, there is a common understanding of the issues rural districts are facing and there is legislation moving forward for financial support. I'm very proud that Granby is a part of this coalition and I look forward to working with local legislators to create funding stream for rural districts. Um, did you wanna ha- more information, um?
Yeah.
Okay, so, um, basically what happened was the state came out with a Rural Schools Report. Um, and while Granby is not listed in the report as a rural district because of our proximity to, um, urban dis- centers, um, the coalition, we are considered rural, um, and so there are other factors that are being used. So, the coalition is working with the state legislature to put forward a funding bill, uh, for, uh, tiered support, uh, for rural districts. And that would be a per-student additional, um, aid. And so, um, that mirrors the report, which one of the recommendations out of the report is for, um, sparsity aid. And so sparsity aid is what, um, other, um, states are using to provide support to rural districts because, like other states, Massachusetts has found that educating children in a rural district is more expensive. Um, it is more expensive because there is declining enrollment, so there are fewer students, uh, that we are, um, able to gather chapter seventy fundings for. That disproportionately affects rural districts as opposed to suburban or even urban districts, declining enrollment. Um, rural districts are employing, uh, more teachers and paraprofessionals per one hundred students when compared to, uh, suburban and urban districts, um. The combination of declining enrollment and rising costs means spending grew more in, rapidly in rural districts versus non-rural districts. So it is generally just more expensive, uh, to educate students in the rural district. And, um, another estimate for rural districts, although it doesn't apply to Granby as much, is that rural districts are spending fifty percent more on transportation. Now, where that does impact, um, Granby is in our special education tuition, i- I'm sorry, transportation and in our vocational as, and, as students are choosing, uh, making their vocational choices. One of the big findings in the Rural Schools Report from the state was that the chapter seventy formula, surprise, doesn't accurately reflect spending in rural districts, um, that it is more expensive, uh, to educate, um, in rural districts. Um, and that what some of the parameters that chapter seventy uses, uh, to create the funding formula is very different than the reality that rural districts are encountering. Um, so the funding doesn't accurately reflect what's needed in a rural district to be sustainable. Uh, and then, uh, finally, um, well, two things, uh, rurals, surprise, rural school districts are relying on school choice to support general operating expenses. It was never the intent.
Hmm.
School choice was to be used for additional, um, sort of extras. Um, and what the report is finding is that, uh, rural districts are relying on school choice to fund the district. Um, and that is incredibly problematic as we know, because those numbers fluctuate, um, and it creates a real, um, sort of, uh, unstable funding environment, uh, for the school districts. And then finally, s- our charter school tuitions have not, um, grown as quickly as, uh, in the rest of the state. Uh, so our tuition reimbursements in rural districts is low, uh, compared to other, uh, parts of the state. With all of that being said, there were several recommendations. Uh, they recommended local aid changes in the chapter seventy formula review to be fully implemented. And although that wouldn't have a huge impact, it would impact rural school districts, um, positively. Um, they have suggested increasing minimum aid to rural school districts. Um, they have suggested regional transportation reimbursement, um, because as Jen had talked about, when you start looking at regionalizing, um, the transportation costs typically out, um, weigh any other, um, efficiencies that you gain. You just end up shifting your expenses into transportation, um, because transportation is not fully reimbursed. Uh, the recommendations include sparsity aid, so increased aid to rural school districts. Um, it also, um, did talk about, um, considering regional models and superintendency unions as a means to gain some efficiencies of scale or economies of scale in rural districts. Um, and that in order to do that, there should be regional incentives. So there should be incentives for districts to consider, um, regionalizing, um, if that's something that, uh, could demonstrate some long-term benefit to students in terms of instruction and programming. Um, and as we have been discussing for a few years, I think there's a real question about whether or not that's, uh, a realistic, um, expectation for regionalizing. So, that's the report in a nutshell. Um, it is in your folder and I'd be happy to put it up, um, on the website, uh, so people can see it. Um, it is a general overview, um, and they said that when they presented it. It does not get down and dirty into the details, um, and so I think the next part of understanding rural schools, uh, in the Commonwealth is to get to that next level of analysis, um, so that we truly understand what the recommendations would mean. Um, but that also some of the driving factors for why is it costing rural school districts more to educate children? For example, insurance, um, majority of rural districts are spending much more on, uh, healthcare and insurance for their staff and therefore less on instruction, and why is that? So they labeled a lot, but they haven't gone deeper into why that may be, so that's the next step for the, for that part of D C.
Is there a timeline for this thing?
Uh, for the next step? I don't know, I can reach out, uh, yeah.
No, I mean, you, um, it's, it's all, uh, I like that, you know, it's all good conversation. But conversations don't help us, really. I mean, we're having the same conversation around foundation budget, but then when you go and ask them when you see this happening,
So the, yeah, it. Yeah.
they say, oh, well, hopefully within the decade.
Yeah.
Well, good luck with that. So how quickly are we expecting something? Well good luck with that so how quickly are we expecting something?
I don't know how quickly. I can say that this the um Rural Schools Coalition that Granby is a part of has been working uh with uh Representative uh Hines and there is now legislation with funding request attached and moving forward through the legislator legislature um so.
Is it true that we are tier three?
Yes.
And tier three uh suggestion per pupil additional uh number is hundred dollars?
I'm I will have to check what it is exactly. There are three tiers yes and
Right.
there are different amounts for each tier.
Okay that's what I I remember if that is true then you know based on the numbers that we have that basically would be our gap right there.
Right I don't think it says high um.
No actually it wouldn't do much for us right? So a hundred dollars per head? That's seventy thousand dollars? Yeah.
Right that's the calculation I did in my in my head pardon the pun um it would be you know in my mind it equates to a teacher um
But you but you you even said it wasn't gonna be a whole lot I thought when you when you were given the presentation I thought you said it wasn't really gonna amount to a whole lot that 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 part alone yeah.
is is what I had.
Right.
Right not at that point but I think it's more about the conversation of um equitably distributing wealth um and how we're going to keep rural districts um sustainable long-term um and this is the first step um I think it will accurately show that it's not enough um so that perhaps in combination with a fair share amendment which improves the chapter seventy uh funding review may be enough to get us moving towards sustainable um sustainability uh but you're right it's very frustrating because we're on the front line right now having to make the very you know difficult decisions that you're talking about. Is it needs-based is it level service or are we cutting again you know?
Yeah. Thank you Cheryl.
Mm-hmm.
Any questions? Um do you have anything from the collaborative?
No we're meeting next week.
Okay. Uh the building committee?
Uh they toured the building unfortunately not um uh I don't I'm did we have a quorum bill?
No.
So maybe we'll have to do another tour.
The the next meeting's gonna be there anyway I think it's.
Oh good good yep. Uh so we toured um we had an update uh both from the architecture architect and the construction or the the program in uh project manager um we are on target uh one of the conversations we will be having um is they are under budget and so if there were any items that the school building committee or anybody here uh remembered that were sort of on hold um we talked about um playground equipment as potentially one um but anything like that they want to get voted on pretty quickly um so that it it doesn't create a a large change order.
I did I did I did hear that there was a playground problem a potential playground problem I did I did hear that there was like not a not 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 many budgeted for new playground equipment and it wouldn't be one.
Right. Right right and so I think that's part of the conversation um that was.
Isn't it a little premature considering that the renovation hasn't?
Well they have to do the landscape they have to set the foundation so depending on what kind of equipment um is going to go in they have to build the yeah so it it is very timely like we have to make some of those decisions now so if there's going to be either fundraising for playground equipment or the use of um uh the use of funding that um because we're under budget that we're going to move into uh creating.
I'm assuming they have contingency built into the renovation in the event I mean that is an old building.
Yes. Well and that's what they keep we keep waiting for which is the renovation is the potential for the budget to go out of balance because you have unintended you run into unintended things or unexpected things um and right now so far they're fine but you know as they move through and
Mm-hmm.
really start renovating that's that's the concern. So you weigh that with but we wanna get these things I mean we're already in March it's April May June July August.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
But we can we can keep our fingers crossed because it's not like they started that renovation blind. They they did spot checks and to see if there was gonna be any problem or not.
Yep. 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 Yeah.
Uh hopefully there is nothing uh major of unanticipated nature.
Right. Right.
So we don't.
And they've already renovated the cafeteria I don't think they ran into anything you know catastrophic there um so they have some history and some experience with the building so.
Right. So a few a few things. Can we have a tour as well 'cause um I mean I wasn't at that last meeting so we.
Yes.
I may have gone in myself.
You you done that you went in it already? Okay.
Yeah. The Saturday well the Saturday
You would.
the Saturday before um when they were officially due to open they had cr- uh work crew there and Joe and I just happened to be driving by and we
Yeah.
just happened to pop in walked around a little.
Alright so if I mean if everybody's seen it that's that's good 'cause we've been we've been in the building.
Well we should walk through it.
Yeah.
Um also we should create the occasion and I'm sure we will for everyone to come in
Mm-hmm.
even the simple looking updates like the stage at the cafeteria.
Mm-hmm.
You know that place looks different um and when you find yourself at an event like you know like the play then you realize I th- my favorite part uh of all that stuff was after the play all it all of them went and started doing their assignments uh you know undo things and they were on stage you could hear their voices and they were putting things in boxes. That's that's what that's what's important. That they so many of them I mean there there were fifty of them or more
Oh absolutely.
they were involved in this production. They had fun
Mm-hmm.
they were from uh grade whatever to senior and they were all together.
Yeah. Learned.
I mean there was really no uh you know delineation by grade or anything like that and that's what's important to see so everybody hopefully will get an opportunity to see that.
No.
Could we if we did have a tour could we um have the camera with us?
Yeah.
Because I'm sure you know there are a lot of people in town who won't have the opportunity to get to this brand-new school that they paid for.
And and that's what it is. I mean you know when when it remains abstract and you don't know you know I I I paid for it but I don't even know what it is what it did
Mm-hmm.
uh I mean to me the the play should have been a big thing and it was nice but I was much more touched uh with the connection that they had and how they were enjoying uh the new stage uh at the cafeteria so can do that.
The camera did follow us for the tour the other night.
Oh yeah?
The building committee.
Oh good.
So that was recorded.
So that'll be up on 'cause your those meetings are televised too and up on YouTube?
Yep he was he was with us.
Okay good.
I think it I think it came off pretty good too I mean it was there were many people so you should have got some good shots and it'll be on you it'll be on shelf if you.
Cool. Thank you Alex.
Stop on your GoPro and put it on your blog.
GoPro put it on your blog.
GoPro stop.
So that's any questions anything else? Okay that's it for our open session. We're gonna vote to enter into executive session under Massachusetts General Law Chapter thirty-eight Section twenty-one. Part A three to discuss strategy with regard to collective bargaining as doing so in an open session may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the committee. The committee will not return to open session.
Deanne Payne Murkowski, aye.
Emery Evan, aye.
And Mike Simpson, aye.
Thank you. Have a good night.